One minute and counting. Anyone want to do a countdown? Well, don't I get a laugh from anyone on that? Was everyone asleep? Can everyone hear me? Hello, hello? How come no one's responding, Vonn?
I hear you.
I can hear you.
I didn't, I didn't hear you, Madam Mayor.
Can I get, can I get some, some excitement out there, some life out there? Hello, hello? Yay! Thank you!
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Our resident pilot, we can hear you. Mr. Pilot? You look like a, like a pilot.
Happy.
I love them, I love them.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. I said that, but nobody responded, so I didn't know what was going on, and nobody heard me.
Well, I already want to see Wayne and wish him happy, yeah, I want to.
Who are you all, early birds?
St. Patrick's Day.
All right, well, it's, um... Although my laptop says 4:30, I know it's 7:30. Okay, so, it is 7:30, let's get this meeting underway, hold on, I have a chat here. Okay. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March 17th, 2021. Welcome to the City of West Miami Regular Commission Hybrid Meeting. The time is 7:30. Madam Clerk, if you would please, um, read the instructions or instruct us on how to join this meeting via Zoom conferencing, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, good evening, everyone. This is a happy meeting of the City of West, City Commission of the City of West Miami. The instructions to participate in the virtual commission meeting, the city commission meeting will be held as a virtual, virtual meeting with elected officials and city staff participating through video conferencing and in person. Members of the public may join the meeting via Zoom at HTTPS://zoom.us/j/3255236059 for live remote public comments. A person wishing to submit live remote public comments will appear live on the TV screens in the city commission chambers during the meeting and will be afforded three minutes to speak. Please submit your first and last name for the record. To access the virtual commission meeting by phone, first dial 1301-715-8592. When you connect, a machine will ask you for the meeting ID. Then dial 325-523-6059, followed by a pound sign. Wait a few minutes until the host gives you access to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and if we could all rise for the invocation, please? Dear Lord, we ask that you continue to look after our police officers and all those that are sworn to serve, protect, and defend us. And we ask that you give us as elected officials the wisdom and courage that we need to make the best decision in the, in the, for the best, for the, for, in the best, how should I say, um, the best way for our city residents, and we ask this in your name, amen? Lieutenant Alentia, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please, sir? There you go, you're off.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, roll call, Mayor Rondo Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Radron is excused this evening. Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes. Is present, and Commissioner Luciana Suarez is present. Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you, next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for March 3rd, 2021, regular commission hybrid meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second by Commissioner Blanes, are all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, for zero, item passes.
Next item.
Item five, public comments. As of this time, I have not received any requests for comments at the meeting or through email, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, one moment, Mr. Aswell. And, um, Madam Clerk, if anyone were to call in or email you during the meeting, please be sure that I am made aware of it. Uh, did you want to make a public comment? Yes, absolutely, sir.
Elliot Aswell, Sunnyside Motel. Uh, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157. Uh, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I basically want to speak to address a question to yourself, if I may.
Yes, sir.
As I approached, uh, and read the agenda downstairs, uh, actually, it's pretty full agenda. Uh, however, uh, there is a question in my mind, where does the city of West Miami stand as relates to your most recent meeting and traffic circle, uh, vis a vis stop sign situation?
Okay, the manager, I'll have the manager address that, because, actually, say, the manager has already addressed that, but I will have her, during her, um, report, the city manager, give you a report on that, sir.
Okay, so it's on, in, it was.
No, no, it's not, but I'll have her give you a verbal report during the report of the city manager, it's not, it's not on there.
My request is nowhere on the agenda whatsoever. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I get, I might be misunderstanding you.
My request for information on this item is nowhere on the agenda or was nowhere intended to be discussed this evening. Is that correct or incorrect?
Okay, your request from the last meeting was a report, please remind, remind me of the request.
I didn't make the request last time. I'm making a request this time. Last meeting, you advised the commission, that I believe it was on the following Monday, that you were having, let me use the term mediation.
Oh, I see, okay, yes, thank you.
And, uh, as I see the agenda, I see that there is nothing on the agenda. And now, listening to you, uh, you're telling me you, I'm asking the question, so I'm assuming if I wasn't here to ask the question, that the issue is not going to be discussed. More information, up to date.
I misunderstood your question, yes, I, the manager will, will comment on that during her report. Thank you, Elliot. Um, next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor, item six, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city commission, uh, good evening. I have a verbal report tonight, and I want to start out by the public comment as, as brought to the light by, um, rez, uh, by corporate citizen Elliot Asbell. I was going to report to the commission that on Friday of last week, I sent an email to Mr. Pennau, where all the commissioners were copied to include the city attorney and the county officials that have been involved in conversations with the removal of the stop signs and the placement of the yield signs, um, and making the, uh, retrofitting that is necessary at the, uh, intersections that were identified by the letter from Miami-Dade County. In fact, we, um, we proceeded to instruct Mr. Pennau to go ahead and make the necessary arrangements to remove the stop signs, because we have, uh, we had a meeting Thursday of last week, I had a meeting with a county on the matter, and it was, uh, called a next step meeting, that's how it was calendared by the county. Uh, again, um, I go on record to say that the city, um, and I never want to say that we lost the battle, but the city has exhausted every avenue possible to maintain the stop signs at the traffic circle. And obviously, we have taken the recommendations by the police chief very seriously as part of our deliberation. However, we have come to the end of the road. I've instructed Mr. Pennau to go ahead and make the necessary provisions to make the modifications that are required, and as well to the city engineer. However, there is cost involved. And Mr. Pennau has had to do some fact finding early this week. Um, we spoke, I think it was yesterday, or the day before, and, um, he was pricing out the retrofitting of these intersections, as well as the cost involved with changing out the signs and complying with the county's request that meet with the federal requirement under the, the memorandum, uh, and our inter-local agreement with the county. We don't have a final report on this, but we are working on it, and it will be achieved.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Anything else in your report?
Yes, ma'am, I, on a lighter note, the Easter egg hunt, uh, the drive-by, the, the flyers are out. Um, they, they are, um, the rec center staff is starting to deliver today, tomorrow, and Friday. The Easter egg bags are almost done, they're very cute. We thank our sponsors, as you know, we've gotten donations for sand hand, sand, uh, hand sanitizers and face masks for children. We had three companies come to the forefront. It was Baptist Hospital, it was, uh, Leon Medical Center, and one of their, um, medical providers, and their names are listed in the flyers as well, a, as well, and I want to say that the company name is Sunshine Health. So, um, we also purchase, uh, some goodies for the kids, and, uh, your, your, your conference room and conference table has the, all the material for the E, for the Easter drive-by, we're working on it. So, um, I'm sure it's going to be a very nice event, and the kids are gonna enjoy it a lot. Hopefully, next year, we'll be back at the park, um, doing our normal, traditional Easter egg hunt.
Madam Manager, can you ha, uh, prepare a letter for us to sign, um, a letter of thanks to our sponsors?
Yes.
Because they came up without us even asking for it, so I definitely want to, want to thank them and have us all sign that, please.
Thank you very much, and yes, ma'am, that was on our radar, but I've made a note of it at your request, and, um, and it'll be prepared by, by my office, uh, this week, hopefully before the end of this week.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, that, no, nothing else.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
Evening, everybody, um, uh, we had, uh, very, very lengthy conversations and, uh, uh, communication with Comcast in reference to, uh, the, uh, suffered, um, uh, by their action. Uh, and after, uh, uh, working with the manager, we send, uh, very strong communication, which elicited the immediate response, and at this time Comcast is waiting for additional information from the, uh, the management, uh, to, uh, uh, see whether we can resolve this petition.
So, Mr. Attorney, it's proceeding nicely, and it looks like maybe in our favor, or just proceeding ni, proceeding more than, proceeding nicely more than it was before, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Hey, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. Uh, the only report I have is regarding the water project. And, as I reported last time, we were wrapping up the main, uh, waterline work throughout the major roads, uh, that has been completed. Uh, we're closing out the last, uh, leg on, uh, to the, on the connection to 57th Avenue up on 9th Street, uh, which will be finished this week, and we'll be moving into, uh, the work along the existing easements, uh, next week. So, projects progressing timely, uh, haven't had any major issues, and, uh, any questions on that?
Well, Frank, I saw the email from Public Works, um, to the residents that we are about to begin behind, uh, behind their homes. How long will be back there, and, and what type of, uh, I mean, would that, uh, how would that affect the residents in any way, be, working behind the homes?
The, the, the main work's gonna be done, uh, through what's called directional drilling, so, uh, that'll be, uh, there, there won't be a major excavation to put in the main lines, gonna go through there, it'll be done, uh, through a drilling machine. Uh, what will happen is, once that line's in place, um, then the contractor will physically have to go through the back of properties and actually reconnect, uh, or should I say, just connect the, the meters, uh, to the new line, so it, it will be, um, you know, each house, there will obviously be, uh, some disruption, uh, probably an hour or two while the contractors, uh, transfer, the service is over. Uh, but it'll be, it'll be a minimal disruption, and we'll have our folks out there, uh, notifying residents, um, you know, ahead of time to ensure that they, they know that, uh, the water will be turned off for, you know, for whatever length of time while the transfers are occurring. Um, that, that's still a little, that's still, you know, probably another month or two out. Um, you know, the main lines have to be installed, and then we'll, we'll go back and do the service transfer, so, um, we'll, we'll make sure everyone's aware.
So you're saying it's a month or two before we start working behind the homes, a month or two out?
No, no, they'll be working behind the homes, but the actual disruption, um, that won't, that won't occur till all those lines are in place and certified. Uh, so there's still, there's still a little bit of time before that occurs, um, but, but we will, we will notify them with, you know, sufficient time.
And how long do you think this work behind the homes will take, more or less?
Like I said, I think we have about another month or, month or two, depending on, you know, with, what conflicts we, um, we encounter out there. Um, but the, the, the main work is not going to be very disruptive, it's really when we come back and have to do the service transfers, that'll be the probably the most disruptive thing, where they'll see, you know, workers, uh, working in the easement, doing the, the actual transfers. So the work that's gonna occur over the next month, the month to two months, um, will be, you know, that they're not gonna have a lot of contractors working in the back of the properties or anything like that, it will be much, much less intrusive.
And after that, after that, what happens next, after we finish behind the homes, what's, what's next?
Uh, that's it, I mean, once, once we do the service transfers over to the new line, the projects will be complete.
So you're saying a couple of months, and we should be complete with this project?
Yeah.
That's amazing, wow, okay.
Yeah, the con, you know, we, uh, we got, you know, we have a contractor that, that, uh, that we worked with before, uh, they're, they're very, they've been extremely responsive, we got a good crew up there. Um, you know, I think, uh, it'll come in, come in together next.
Wonderful. Any questions from the table for?
Yes, I do have one.
Go ahead, sir.
How about restoration, that includes restoration?
The restoration will be complete, um, after, after everything's done, uh, you know, we don't want, we definitely don't want them to have to pave the road, and then they have, then they damage it with the, with the mechanism, so that the, the final restoration, the finalness of asphalt, we're still probably a couple months away until, until everything's done.
So, word again, as restoration being four months away?
Uh, three to, three to four months, probably, you know, worst case scenario, yeah.
When you say restoration, what, what do you mean, what, what?
The, basically, the final, yeah, the final last fall on the roadway side, the striping and all that.
So the cleanups, then, cleanups and, and restoring the roads, and so, okay.
Restoring the road to, you know, putting a new road on, uh, the, the, the grass, uh, the driveways that have been damaged, sidewalks, uh...
We, we could, we could probably work with them to, to make sure that at least the driveways and the swales and all that is, is restored, uh, now, uh, on a timely basis, and, and not have to wait for the final asphalt operation to take place, so, so we'll, we'll talk to them about that and see how quickly, uh, that can occur.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Frankie. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item nine, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I do not have any this evening. Madam Clerk, before, please, let me ask you, are there any changes to the agenda this evening that I need to be made aware of?
Well, Madam Mayor, on item 11A, there is a presentation by Resource City, and Mr. Tony Newell requested deferral of, of his presentation, uh, until the April 7th commission meeting. And to my understanding, there are other items that may be deferred, and for that, I yield to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, briefly, um, I would like for you to consider deferring item 10A on the report, and it, um, it's a follow-up report at the request of the commission on the sanitation reserves, although I have a ballpark figure, there are some last-minute details that we need to incorporate, which involves the possible financing of the new garbage truck, and so I want to incorporate those numbers before I give you, um, the expectations for how we will finish this fiscal year in terms of reserves for the sanitation. I think that, that is critical to the, to the dollars that, um, that are going to be, uh, utilized, how they're gonna be utilized, and it all depends on the re, repayment schedule. So if you would be kind enough to consider, uh, deferring this item, so that I can give you a written and complete report at the next commission meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
That, that would be one. Um, I don't, I am not sure if Mr. Penn is ready to present his report under 10B. I know that, uh, he is joining us via Zoom on the, um, actual, uh, containers for the garbage. You may want to defer it, or you may want to at least hear his report.
Um, let's just go back to the agenda, and, and if, if it has to be deferred, we'll defer it, we, when, uh, when the clerk reads it, so.
Okay.
Perfect, and Madam Clerk, let's continue on then, next item.
Okay, so, item I-10 on their finished business, the city manager has a request to defer item 10A, so item 10B is the report by the director of Public Works on the coast for the garbage containers.
Mr. Pennau?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor. The, um, containers, uh, used by all of the municipalities here in Dade County and in Florida uh, come from, uh, Seattle, Washington, and it's under a contract that they have with the, with the county. And it's, uh, each container is, uh, $48 a container. Uh, that's for the 96, uh, gallon container, which is the largest one. They also have a smaller one, which is, uh, $44, and it holds up to, um, 66 gallons, uh, which is slightly about six inches lower than the one that you see out there from Miami-Dade County. Um, once we decide, uh, when the, the, the city commissioner or the city manager want to take up the, the, um, the changeover, uh, once we have the new truck, then we'll come back with a, a report on how we wish to address that.
All right, so we're not deferring it, you're just gonna come back to us with more information at that time?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and I think that the report that we're gonna give you regarding the expectations for our reserves is gonna pay, you know, be critical to the decision-making process here.
All right, so, Mr. Pennau, you'll be ready to present that, along with the, the sanitation reserves report?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Mayor, have a comment?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, I, in the last meeting, uh, the, we approved the purchase of the truck, because the truck is very old, and, uh, basically, all, all of us vote for it, uh, authoritarians to purchase the new truck. Now, about these containers, uh, I have to call you, Mayor, Commissioner Blanes, Commissioner, uh, Candida Blanca, and myself. When I spoke about the containers, uh, I understood some containers, because the new truck was able to get a bigger, uh, container for the neighbors to put the, the garbage. But the point is that now we have a problem. If we are to get involved in the truck that only use those containers, we are going to have a problem with the residents, like my neighbors, like myself, like sometime, to some of you. We don't have too much garbage, and we put a plastic bag i- in front of the house, and actually, the people from the, uh, garbage department, or, well, garbage department or the, uh, Public Works, they take their plastic bags and they put in the truck. The point, my question is this, are we going to be obligation, it's going to be obligation for our residents to use those garbage containers? Pennau is referring, and we will not be able to use the small plastic bag, because we don't have too much garbage. We have a lot of, uh, senior citizens here, or people who leave one person or two persons in their houses, and they don't have enough, uh, garbage to fill the big container. I want to be sure that these containers and the new truck is not going to introduce a new system of collecting the garbage. And we will be in the problem that our old residents, senior citizens, don't, cannot use the small plastic bag. I want the clarification. If you know today, when he had come with the cost of those containers, I need the, um, administration, Yolanda, the manager, and Juan, explain us that the, our residents, we will have the same right that we have now to put a b, a small plastic bag in front of the house and be picked up by the, uh, garbage people. I want to be sure that this new truck doesn't mean that it's going to be a new way of, uh, collecting the garbage.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Pennau, would you like to answer this now, or, as the Commissioner stated, would you like to and, to address his question at the time of the next report, when you'll have more information for us?
We'll provide it with the report.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Pennau.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Pennau?
Yes.
Uh, our neighbors to the east, um, what kind of system do they have?
Coral Gables uses toters in the region like we do.
Okay.
What do you mean, what you do?
Why, why would they, why do you think that they have this kind of service, and they don't change?
I don't know why they haven't changed out from the totter system that they use. I know that they, uh, they run around with little wheelbarrows, uh, pulling garbage out from the rear of the properties. Um, there is, uh, there's no real change in what we want to do with the truck and the new containers. It's, uh, more, it's actually gonna be more, uh, serviceable than it is right now, because it will be our people bringing out the containers, and our people putting the containers back where they go. The resident won't have to even pull them out, we'll pull them out.
Okay.
For them to pull them out.
All right, I, I, I've never heard that, that one before.
Exactly.
We are, our sanitation workers are going to go in the property and are gonna pull these containers out?
From the side of the property, yes. Pull them out, put them on the truck, dump them, and roll them back in. By the time they're finished, the route is completed, and all the containers are back where they go.
I don't know, I don't think that's gonna work. And I'll tell you why. Not, not long ago, I, you know, I, I, I wanted you all to address the fact that, you know, a, a lot of the containers that are being used now are, are visible, and, you know, they're an eyesore, you know, to, to, to neighbors and the community at large. And, you know, I asked code enforcement to try to address that, and there's really, there's not one residence that keeps their, their, uh, garbage, uh, containers, you know, in the same spot as, as the other. You know, we can't even get them to, right now, to put them where they need to be, which is by our code, right? Uh, to be away out of sight, on the side of the house, or behind the house, uh, not seen from, from the sidewalk or the street, right? Am I correct?
Correct.
Right, so, tha- that doesn't happen now. So, what you're telling me is that we're gonna try to get the residents to keep these new garbage containers specifically somewhere in sight where our sanitation workers will reach them and bring them out, and then put them back?
That's correct.
So I, I think we're gonna be, you know, breaking our own code.
No.
Because, you know, they're gonna be in plain sight, they're not supposed to be in plain sight.
They're not gonna be in plain sight, they're gonna be on the side of the house, behind the, behind the fence.
That doesn't happen now, Mr. Pennau.
I understand that, Commissioner, but it's because they have to bring them out, and they have to put them in. When we have to bring them out, and we have to put them in, it'll be different.
Well, I, I, I tell you what, we, we can get residents to comply with our code enforcement regulations now, and we're gonna complicate things by bringing in larger, different containers, and we're gonna tell them that they need to put them somewhere where our sanitation workers are gonna see them, they're gonna put them right in front of the house. And you're gonna fly by, you're gonna see a garbage container in front of each and every one house.
I beg to differ.
Well, you know what, I, I think you're all in this, buddy, uh, sorry to say, but, uh...
It's our, it's our challenge to implement, and our challenge.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, one at a time, one at a time.
Thinking about, you know, quality of life, we're always thinking about aesthetics, we're always thinking about, you know, trying to make this city a better place to, to live, and, you know, this is, this is, I don't think this is something that's gonna be helpful, uh, towards, towards that. You know, I think this is gonna degrade the look of the city, having these garbage. uh towards towards that. You know, I think this is going to degrade the look of the city, having these garbage cans all over the place. Because, you know, you you can't get residents, you know, you have renters that don't care. And then you have some some resident elderly residents, you know, they're like Commissioner Suarez says, and they're not going to be able to to do it because, you know, they they don't even uh produce, you know, one spare um uh garbage uh liner of gar- of 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 refuse. So I don't know. I I got really, I don't have a good feeling about this. I think we we think what we're doing.
Again, you're 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 uh looking at on the side of the empty glass. I would look at on the side of the full glass.
No, I I.
Let's give it a try and see.
What goes on now? I know what goes on now and I and I brought this up for you and code enforcement to address. And you know what? It it doesn't get addressed. You might.
It doesn't get addressed because they're private cans. They're not owned by the city.
I don't know. I.
If I may, if I may offer a a friendly suggestion, I think as part of our report, we need to incorporate also areas because there are residents that do keep their bins in the alleyway where where it's supposed to be. Um, so that it is easier for the garbage collectors to take the garbage out. I offer the a a.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
One at a time, please.
I'm sorry, but you just said something that just doesn't make any sense. Okay? The alleyway behind the house, okay, most houses have fences. And back, the 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 rear fences don't have doors. Most of them don't. They go out to an alleyway. So now what are we going to, now what are what are you saying? We're going to get.
You you are correct. And and I was going to go there. I was going to go there. If if I can finish is.
Put the garbage there.
I was going to propose that in the report for the next meeting or the one after that, we're going to have to do an assessment of the easement areas to see where these fences are blocking the easement. Many of these fences have a grandfather clause because they were built prior to the ordinance. So we have to make a an educated study of how we can make this program a successful program. And and there are challenges as you are explaining. Um, so I just would like to see if we can have an opportunity to at least study it and look at the easements and look at the placement of the cans and the fences are an issue. So we will bring back to you a more detailed analysis of what is feasible and what is not.
Why are we doing this in the first place?
Because, as I understand it, that the truck that was purchased or approved by the city for purchase has a, has a a the back of it has a mechanism for the the use of or or like the um recycling trucks do. They have the ability to pick up a can and throw the garbage in the truck. I know some communities are going to this type of system because it avoids workers' compensation, injuries and report of injuries by employees who are injuring themselves because they have to carry heavy containers filled with garbage. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Penn, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have had some of these cases um over the years, not that many, but there, you know, all this goes into the equation, the liability, the mitigation of potential losses to the city and workers' comp. So we may not have a perfect model. We came back to you to let you know that we looked at the containers as as requested by the city commission, but we don't have the answers and I don't think we're in a position to recommend against or for it until we look at all the advantages of the program and all of the disadvantages based on our unique situation.
Let me bring something up. How many of these mechanisms does this uh new vehicle have in the back? One?
Two.
I I'm not well versed on this. Uh, Mr. Penn, I do have a copy of the requisition in my possession in case you need it.
It has two tippers.
It's got two? Okay, we 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 have major, major issue keeping our our sanitation equipment running. Wh- what do you think is going to happen when something happens to that mechanism? And we have those garbage cans and we don't have a backup? Talk about workman's comp, talk about liability. What are we going to make those guys go out there and between the two of them, lift those big garbage cans up?
No, Mr. Blanis, our other truck is also equipped with tippers. We do have a backup.
We have a backup. We have backup to the new truck with a new mechanism?
Yes, sir.
Which truck is it? Did we buy another truck that that I don't know of?
No, the one that we bought ten years ago comes equipped with tippers.
The one that's in the shop being repaired.
How old is that truck? It's still in the shop, right?
Yes.
It's been there how many months?
Five months.
Five months? So so you're going to tell me that you're going to rely on this backup that's been in 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 a shop for five months that they can't get that the uh they can't get fixed?
No, Commissioner, I'm going to rely on a brand-new truck that I'm buying.
Okay, well, well, everything breaks. What about if that thing breaks? What are you going to do?
Uh, Commissioner.
You don't have a really good backup, do you? You know, we need to really rethink this. I really, really do. This doesn't sound good.
I I understand your your point.
To.
Mr. Mr. Asbell, if you don't mind, I'll I'll let them finish the conversation. Mr. Blanis? Is that, are you finished? Okay, so.
Like I say.
Here's what we're.
Like I say, I I I don't think this is a good idea at all.
Okay, well.
I I why, why do we need to change to another system? What's wrong with the system that we have now? It works well. We just need a new truck. It works well. Okay?
The truck is equipped to work the same way it's been working up to now.
Okay, but but why do we need to get new garbage cans, larger garbage cans?
You don't have to. The truck is equipped with.
And we don't need to. We shouldn't.
Okay, then that's your opinion. That's fine.
Okay, here's what we're going to do. Um, you're going to come back to us with more information in the next meeting. Um, and we will continue the discussion of these garbage containers at that time. We'll make a decision at that time. Does that work for you, Commissioner Blanis?
Um, yeah, you know, I think that this this needs to be, this needs to be thoroughly, you know, discussed because, you know, I mean, nobody's asked me. Have they asked you, Madam Mayor?
Well, we discussed.
Have they asked you, Commissioner?
We, it did, it did come up in the last.
Nobody's asked me about these cans up to now.
It was part of the last meeting, if I believe.
Yeah, but did they, did we discuss any of this? No?
Okay, so.
Madam Mayor, may I clarify something? The purchase was not approved. Um, we were asked by a member of the city commission to look into it and come back and report. All we have before you today is a report. If the consensus is, is that we know not waste time in doing so because there are limitations. I mean, to be frank with you, why employ the time and the effort if the commission is already expressing some opposition and valid concerns?
Madam Manager, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
When when our our sanitation team hits the road, right, and and picks up one side of the city, what time do they start? What time do they finish?
Generally, a little bit before seven o'clock in the morning.
And they're done by what, eleven o'clock?
Eleven o'clock. Um, we have actually addressed some um some concerns. Eleven, eleven-thirty at the latest.
City.
I'm sorry.
We're a little city. It takes them three hours.
I know.
Why do we need to bring these monstrosities and put them in front of houses and 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 create eyesores?
Sir, we didn't bring it up. It it was not our recommendation.
One at a time. One at a time. If I have to say one at a time, one more time, I'm going to use the gavel. One at a time. Let's not overtalk each other, please.
Hit me on the head with it.
I won't hit you on the head, I promise. I can't. There's plastic between us. I can't even throw paper at you anymore.
The 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 city of Coral Gables doesn't do it. And they're humongous. I mean, you know, they can 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 compare to us. They're, you know, they're they're a giant. And they still don't do that. So.
If if there's.
Mayor. Mayor, have a comment?
I hear, I see you. I hear you and you will be next. Let Commissioner Blanis.
It takes, and it takes less than three hours to pick up all the garbage in one uh route.
May I?
You, uh, Madam Manager, did you have anything to say or you were done?
No, ma'am.
Stop you.
No, ma'am.
Commissioner, go ahead, sir.
All right, okay. We have neighbor cities, but we are, as a commissioners, and you, Mayor, and Blanis Commissioner, Candy Blanca Commissioner, and myself, we are not in the competition business. We are in the administration and the uh legislation business. If it's not broken, don't fix it. Our system has been working very well. We need a new truck. But I don't think we should make that for the, we need a new truck. We have to change everything in the city and create almost a a chaos. If we are going to say you, uh, you have to use a big container, you cannot use a a small plastic bag, then if you, if the plastic bag weight more or less than the container, a disability, please, Yolanda. I don't think we should go with those kind of change of the the way we're doing now. We need a truck, yes, but we don't need to fix something. It's not broken.
Okay, I I'm going to remind everyone, this is just a report, okay? So this is not, we're not going to vote on this item. This is simply a report. And Madam Clerk, Madam Manager, on the next agenda, please make a line item that so that we take a vote on this. If you want to come back to us with more information so that we can make an educated vote, please do. But let's put it on the agenda as a as a voting item because right now it's just a report.
That's right.
Okay?
And I and I would not encourage you to take action until we do further research.
Correct. So come back to us with with a lot more information. I'm sure in the meantime, we will all meet with the ma- administration and we'll get our answers, our questions answered. And then we will, we will recap all our questions and answers um at the next meeting. And at that time, we will, we should be able to to take a vote on whether or not we will proceed with the purchase of these cans. Okay?
Nonetheless, Madam Manager, I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is a good spirited discussion.
Absolutely.
Because it's bringing up a lot of points.
Absolutely.
And and shedding a lot of light.
Yes.
You know, we had not discussed at all and it's been brought up already once.
I agree.
I was, I actually left the commission meeting, uh, last commission meeting, wondering what garbage cans are we are we talking about? You know, and now now that I see it again, I'm like, oh, wait a minute, what?
I don't like.
I agree.
Because I have not been asked.
And we will continue the the discussion with 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 more information. We'll.
So let it be known. I don't like them, so.
Me neither.
Do duly noted. Um, but again, it's, we're not ready to take a vote on it, but I agree, we need it. We we always need to discuss these items. So I encourage you to to um speak with the administration, get, you know, your questions answered. And then we will continue to discuss this at the next meeting and we will take an official vote. We will all be ready to make it, to take an official vote at the next meeting.
Thank you, Madam.
After we continue the discussion.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Yes, item eleven under new business agenda items, item eleven A was has been deferred, item eleven B, presentation slash recommendation of financing agreement for the new garbage truck by the office of the city manager. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city commission. I received uh this morning, actually, I received a um proposal from City National Bank for the financing of the truck that uh was purchased at the commission meeting on February seventeenth. And it's a proposal to finance a hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars for a period of ten years at an interest rate of two-point-eight-five percent with semi-annual payments, the first one to become due on October first, twenty-twenty-one. The um, the the, the bank has given us two amortization schedules. One is for eight years for the repayment of the debt and the other one is for ten years. And um the rates are very competitive. I also know Mr. Penna sought out a proposal from one of the financing agencies that works with the company that manufactures the the garbage trucks. And there, there, the rate of interest, there's really a very slight difference. I believe it was two-point-nine-zero. Mr. Penn, correct me. If I'm wrong, I know they sent you an email. This one is more of a formal proposal. Um, the the rates um are effective, the percentage are effective um or expire uh on March thirty-first of this year. After these dates, the above rates will be adjusted to commensurate with the market rates at this time, at that time. Uh, the city, there's a closing cost, an estimated closing fees of one thousand two-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Um, the, I I am proposing a ten-year repayment schedule. As you are aware and may suspect, that the Sanitation Enterprise Fund has depleted reserves with the understanding that there are no prepayment penalty clauses and that we should make every effort possible to put more money in the budget to accelerate payments to see if we're able to pay this truck and the and its financing off within the first six years. That will keep our equipment, the the turnover of our equipment and avoid having to spend so much money on repair costs. So I am recommending the ten-year financing with uh specific instructions to the office of the city manager to try to come up with as much of um of a budget plan to for the re- repayment of the truck. The expected payment of the truck for this fiscal year that ends September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one is sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, of which three thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents is interest payment with a principal payment of twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. In subsequent years, the payment structure will be, the amortization schedule would be twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars a ye- a year um with um an interest payment included in this amount of four thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Of course, the interest works on a declining basis based on the total principal that is owed. So the more principal we pay into, the less the interest that we're going to pay into the debt service. And the sooner we will get rid of this this debt. So I'm proposing that we take the ten-year schedule so that we can have certain flexibility. And um but with with the understanding that we got to try and budget as much as possible every year.
Madam Manager, I I see that the letter you're talking about to Mr. Penna from this company and it is just a letter, it's not a proposal. But from, is Citibank the only bank we checked and got a proposal from?
This is the only bank that gave us a formal proposal. I have, this is the only bank as of today. Uh, Mr. Penn has an email proposal from another vendor. Uh, if you wish, we can check with other financing institutions.
Did we?
Part, pardon?
Did we check with other, with other banks?
These are the only two that we have checked with as of today.
I would definitely like to see something from other banks. I I I can't see why we would make a decision to go with the the only bank that sent us a proposal.
Well, this bank, I I can tell you that um we must do business with Florida-qualified depositories. So there are other banks in the city that we could go to. Um, we could go to Wells Fargo and we can go to, I mean, uh, yeah. We can go, Inter-American Bank does not, is not a Florida uh deposit, qualified depository. So we have to check with the banks to make sure that they are authorized to handle transactions with cities. Um, because if not, it would become an audit issue. We do bank on a daily basis with City National. We have had other loans with them in the past. And they have offered us competitive rates, but we can continue to check. The truck won't be in for several months. Um, and so, because obviously we just purchased it and I'm assuming we're not going to get this truck until probably May first, if we're lucky.
So we have time. So I don't see any reason why we should not entertain proposals from other banks. So we have something to compare to.
We can, however, like I, like I just read into the record and not that I'm, you know, I'm sold on City National, I'm open to it. Um, but obviously on March thirty-first. Um, but obviously on March thirty first, twenty twenty one, the the rates that we are being offered will be adjusted commensurately with the market rates at that time. So we lose the risk of losing the two point eight five percent for the financing of the of the truck. But if you want us to check, I'm more than happy to um, speak to other banks as well.
Well, it gives us two weeks. I I would imagine we could get a proposal from another bank and within.
No question about it, but there will not be a commission meeting until April seventh. So we're we'll be outside.
I mean, I mean, I'd like to hear from the table, but I I I would feel more comfortable in having more than one proposal in front of me.
I have a question for the attorney, Mr. Attorney, does this sound right? I mean, a uh, this fall under some type of co- uh, competitive bidding? And are all banks doing the same thing that this bank is doing? Uh, you know, uh, could they possibly be doing the same thing using following the same guidelines as raising the interest rate as of a certain date?
Well, yes, the bank has the option of raising the uh, that's their money, so uh, he who has the money makes the rules, so they have the right to uh.
Let me ask a question about the banks uh, doing things. Uh, my question is, you know, doesn't this fall into some kind of competitive bidding? So everything looks really good and transparent?
Well, the thing is this, uh, as far as the financing is concerned, uh, the answer is no, it would not fall under competitive bidding. And in fact, uh, it the administration, as far as I understand, has made sufficient efforts to seek uh, uh, quotations from many banks. One.
That's not what the manager just said.
We have two two at two quotes for the financing of the truck. One is from City National and the other one is Juan, do you remember the name off the top of your head?
I'm looking at it, Wright Wrighton.
Wright Wrighton.
Wrighton is the dealer.
Right.
It's not a bank, so I don't have a note from a bank.
BMO of Chicago is the other bank.
BMO, correct.
Of Chicago.
And they're offering a two point nine percent.
Again, there's not many banks that involve themselves in leases of vehicles that are for municipal use. They're they're very limited, so we're not gonna go out there and find every bank willing to give us a loan of a uh, oh, uh, almost two hundred thousand dollars for a a piece of equipment that we're gonna use for picking up garbage. So there's not that many of them, we'll go out and we'll solicit others, but we first gotta find them. They're not out there, even when we used to do it for motor credit, they stopped doing it.
They stopped doing it, that's correct. Um, and to add to that, Madam Mayor, I did check with the Florida League of Cities. They have very attractive financing rates for upgrades of city equipment. The the least, um, the the minimum amount that we could borrow would be two billion dollars under their program.
Okay, I I I mean, I'm still, I still wanna know why we didn't come, why you guys didn't come to us with more than one bank? That's my only concern.
We can go out, I mean, the time involved between um, the time that uh, we received the first um, the first quotation, which was an email from this Chicago based company. We've been talking to City National Bank and it takes time for them to look, they ask us for our audit report. They wanna see our financial stability. So we can reach out, we also had thought about reaching out to Eastern National Bank, which is a Florida qualified depository, which had a branch on Berg Road. And uh, we just learned that City National Bank bought them out recently as well. So I I mean, we're we're happy to check with another banking institution.
I would feel more comfortable and I'll leave, I'll leave that up to the.
Sure.
Well, what what are your thoughts, Commissioner?
You know what, um, we sit here and we decide ultimately what happens with the taxpayers' money. You guys sit over there and you guys propose to us, but really, who is responsible for making that decision? We are, right? So I think it would be prudent for us to have that information so that we can make the best possible decision. And also, you know, for the uh, you know, for transparency and, you know, uh, ethicality of 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 of, you know, uh, what's happening, you know?
Sure, we're happy to go out and check with other banks and bring those proposals. What I will do as well is take this proposal back to the bank at City National and I will ask them to re reprice it, if you would, uh, the proposal so that we could br- bring it back with new information at the uh, April seventh meeting. If the rates don't change and it's a good proposal, then we will recommend and you'll have others to work with as well.
But it says this is good until March thirty first, why would we have, why would we have them redo it if it's good until March thirty first?
Because the rates change, the rates could be adjusted after that date. It all depends on what the interest rates are, prime interest rates and what the bank can do in terms of offering us a competitive rate. Uh, this rate is good today and it's good through March thirty first. But, you know, with the market and the way it is, we may see a slight increase or or we may experience a slight decrease as well, it could work against us or for us.
The more information, the better, so. And if I need to call a sp- an emergency meeting or a special meeting, if this has to be addressed by the the by.
March thirty first.
Then then that's what we'll do.
I will let you know, it will take a few days for these banking institutions to put together a formal proposal because again, they rely on financial information from the city. Then they have to take it to their to their loan folks and make a determination as to what conditions need to be met. So we'll, we're happy to go to work on this tomorrow, that's the the will of the commission.
I would feel more comfortable if I saw more than one in front of me.
Not not a problem, thank you.
Any other comments on this, Commissioner Block, any any other? Commissioner Suarez, he's not even there, okay, so, um. Wonderful, then that's exactly what we'll do. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, for the the record, so you were bringing this back uh, either at the April seven or sooner if it's necessary for consideration with other proposals, okay? Thank you. Uh, item eleven D, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami declaring an emergency and waiving competitive bidding as a result of the failure of the operations facility of the city hall elevator that serves the second story that serves the access to commission chambers. Further, in order to comply with Americans with Disabilities Act mandates authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal for Tyson crop elevators for a total amount of forty six thousand one hundred and forty five dollars and eighty six cents for the repairs and replacement of the hydraulic oil oil lines for the elevator and the ceiling of the elevator pit and control room. Set funds to come from general funds reserve account providing for an emergency timeline for repairs providing for an effective date.
Who is going to present this? Mr. Penna, Ms. Aguilera?
Um, ma'am, I would recommend that in light of the previous consensus and instructions from the commission, I think we should uh, go ahead and defer this until we have uh, a few proposals from other banks. And that way we can entertain what is the best option for the city.
Uh, Madam Manager, I read item eleven D, which is the resolution.
I'm sorry. The repairs of the elevator. I apologize, I was at eleven C, I'm so sorry.
You're ready.
This one is the competitive bid bidding for the elevator, yes, I am so sorry. Uh, my mistake, all right. So I would like to see if we could get a report on what the findings were as a result of the inspection. And um, and we will, I will address the financial end of it. Mr. Penna, can you talk to me about when the elevator was inspected, what they found? In what condition it is and what the Miami Dade County is doing to make us comply?
Uh, March tenth, we had Tyson Krupp out here to inspect the elevator. Uh, in the prior meeting of February, when I used the elevator, I noticed that a jerky motion in the in the cab. So I immediately realized that hydraulic fluid was missing in the in the elevator. We asked Tyson Krump to come out here and look at it. Uh, the elevator is now thirty three years old and uh, the oil supply lines that go from the control room equipment to the uh, pit have corroded over the years and it's time to replace them. Uh, they're leaking oil over time and they're not uh, safe. So the uh, the inspection reveals that they need to be replaced. Uh, Miami Dade County is aware of it, they they saw the the oil leakage when they came to do their inspection. Uh, in fact, today we 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 sent them the uh, the agendas so they could see that it was on the agenda uh, addressing the issue to see if that'll delay their issuance of a citation as far as notice violation on the elevator.
All right, Mayor.
Uh, yes, and I have a question as well, so I'm looking through this package.
Hey, you're having coming to.
Okay, one at a time, Commissioner Bonis is first.
This resolution reads, um, amount of forty six thousand one hundred and forty five eighty six cent from for the repair and replacement. What does that mean? Is it a repair, is it a replacement?
Well, so some some lines will be repaired, the ones that are uh, accessible from the from the outside and some have to be completely replaced because of the condition of the line on the interior. They're they're composite lines, they're not all one line going to the elevator and coming back from the elevator. So some areas are going to be repaired and some will be replaced.
So the the elevator company will be the ones determining that?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Penna, you said they come out every year, Miami Dade County comes out and inspects every year?
Every year.
Why am I package, am I looking at a Miami Dade County certificate operation from twenty fourteen?
That's probably an old copy that you have from uh, something that they gave us, but uh, they come every year. There there should be a brand new certificate inside the uh, inside the elevator. We make, sometimes uh, you've seen this in other buildings.
Why'd you guys give us one dated expiration date twenty fourteen then?
Well, because this is the one that's inside the cab and nobody's replaced it, but we have new ones here in the office that are uh, up to date.
Okay. Um, and and I have a comment, I don't, I don't wanna fall into the same trap where we're in with the garbage truck. You said this this elevator is thirty three years old.
That's correct.
I I don't know life expectancies of elevators, but what happens when an elevator is this old? I mean, is it time to to do a complete replacement of the elevator? I don't wanna get into putting forty fifty thousand dollars of Band-Aids on and and, you know, I don't wanna run the route that we just ran with the garbage truck.
Well, Ma- Mayor, you know, you 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 all keep saying that, but you all don't realize that for years, this city has been cash lacked for many years. Not until recent with all the development that we brought in uh, are we now able to address the issues that have addressed us for twenty years? You know, the everybody around here seems to think that we have a big pot of money stuck in some bank somewhere. This city has been pushing the envelope for many years and now it's finally seeing the light. So every time that that question comes up, why isn't it addressed at budget time? Because frankly, you know, there are other priorities.
Okay, well, what can we consider? Can we look at a replacement versus a repair? Are we are we at that point? Which which is what I meant to say, I I don't want it to go the route of the garbage truck.
We are at that point, but the forty six thousand dollars that they're going to put in is equipment that will not be replaced, even if you replace the elevator, because the pipes get reused. These are pipes that are in the system that have to be replaced. The control operation of the system is so old that they don't even have parts for them anymore. Remember last year when the door kept getting stuck back and forth, back and forth on nineteen? Well, they have to take those uh, circuit breakers, take them back to their shop and they have one guy that's experienced and working on these things and they repair them to bring them back and work. So yes, we have another proposal for the complete replacement, but that's almost two hundred thousand dollars.
But you, what you said is very, I mean, it's a huge clarification for me. We'd have to do this even if we did replace the elevator, right?
That's correct.
Then that's what I should have heard from the beginning, then I wouldn't have even had that question, it's perfect.
Yeah, but I.
Really understand now.
So every time.
When's the last time we spent any money on the elevator?
Never.
Never, that's that that you you've clarified a lot for me with those two.
But you keep bringing up the truck situation, you know, the truck situations are there because we've always put other vehicles ahead of these trucks.
I use that example. One I had to use and I was just saying I, now I understand, do we have to do this? Whether or not we get a new one, so that's basic information to me, I got it. But I used the truck because that's the most recent one and I didn't realize until you told me that I thought this, we we, you know, we, if we spent this fifty thousand dollars and then we go and have to replace it, that would be a waste. But now it makes perfect sense to me, so. And the reason I kept brought the truck because it was the most recent thing. So I'm not, I'm not bashing anyone or attacking anyone or, and I know, I understand exactly what you said. You know, we're we're a small city, we don't have a lot of money, but that's the only example I could use. But I completely understand, okay?
These are big ticket items.
I got it. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, if I may, ask Mr. Penna a question. Um, Juan, so in order for me to understand this correctly, the forty six thousand one hundred and forty five dollars with eighty six cents are, this is money well spent in anticipation of possibly having in the near future to replace the elevator and maybe we can save money to replace it because we've already done this preliminary work, is that a possibility based?
We may be able to extend it a couple more years, yes.
Next, yeah, but if if the if the opportunity lends itself for the city to switch out the elevator and upgrade and 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 purchase an upgrade, is the forty six thousand dollars that we're gonna be spending on this now going to contribute to lessening the future purchase price for the elevator?
Yes, because you have done the work that has to be done anyway.
That was my question, we have to do this irregardless.
That's correct.
The elevator is going to run on these lines.
That's correct.
These are the lines, it's not the elevator, so regardless, this has to be done.
That's correct.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have even had my question had I known that to begin with, so I'm good. Commissioner Suarez, go ahead, sir.
All right, Mayor, I can see that that you are not very well eh, involved in the construction business because elevators are very, very expensive. And sometimes they are even making artway, custom made for so certain old buildings, it's very expensive. Eh, I think if it's possible to repair and replace some parts, it's the best thing we can do it. Because replace one of those things, you have no idea how much it is. And if it is replaced and repaired by Stacy, it's a very good company, Stacy Crop is one of the best in the world. So I, another thing, we have the chamber of stairs, we have a public going upstairs. We we, we need to let an elevator by law, I think Juan or Yolanda may explain. But I think we should, we have to have an elevator to to upstairs, so we have to, we have to do these things as soon as possible.
The elevator is working, the elevator, everyone has access to the chamber, the elevator is working. It's leaking, but it's working. And you're right, I don't have a construction license, nor have I been involved.
I know, I know this.
Certification that the 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 pipes um, have nothing to do with the elevator, that is something I learned tonight. As I'm, as I'm well aware that you probably learned the same thing tonight that I did. All right, uh, anybody, any other questions on this item?
Well, what goes up must come down.
There you go. And we wanted to come down well oiled, right? And we wanted to go up well oiled.
Madam Mayor.
Question on this item.
I make a motion.
Madam Manager. Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Thank you, and what we're doing is I've already um, reached out to Robert Ruano to see if there are any grants. The ADA office, um, sometimes you find state grants or other grant announcements that could help us with the purchase of an elevator. So we're gonna expedite or prioritize those those research to see if we can find money elsewhere.
Wonderful, well, many grants you can find.
Thank you.
Motion.
Wait, I, you know, this, I don't know if you've seen those commercials on on TV, I think they're called the uh, Acorn uh, stair elevator. They're installed on the side of the stair and this is is for one person at a time. And it's got like a little seat with.
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, yes, yes.
And it's like, will that qualify for us instead of having an elevator? I think that would be a lot cheaper.
I am not sure. We'd have to research that with the ADA office and the elevator agency.
Their elevator.
Acorn, yes, I know what you're talking about, sir.
One person at a time, it goes up and then it goes down, it's like a, like a, a ski lift.
Yeah, they usually do it for inside of the house.
Yeah, but we can have an outside one with a little canopy if it rains.
May qualify for some ADA grants, not, it's worth, worth looking into. Listen, if you don't ask, you don't know. So if we don't check, we won't know.
Yeah. The manager?
I'll be the ticket.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Rielobos.
You already have a motion, so you should proceed with that.
I don't, we don't have a motion.
I make a motion.
You have a motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Conversation, I never heard it because we were still discussing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I did it.
Well, Commissioner, next time you need to be sure that we're done discussing because you motioned during the conversation.
I did, I did it in the moment you was not talking.
Am I the only one that missed the motion? Did you all hear a motion up here?
There was a motion, Madam Manager.
I got it, sir. All right, so I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a commotion and I have a second from Commissioner Blannis. And, and Commissioner, next time, can you please wait till the conversation's over before you motion? Or please get my attention first. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Blannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Four zero.
Four zero.
That's what she said, four zero. Next item.
Item 11E, nomination by Department Directors for Employees of the Year of 2020 by the Office of the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If we can defer this item, I would greatly appreciate it.
Deferred. Next item?
Defer for April 7. Item F, nomination for, of the 2020 Mayor's Award for Excellence by Mayor Rodriguez.
I would defer that along with item E.
Okay, defer for April 7. Item G, discussion slash recommendation of use of city-purchased Public's gift cards not submitted to CARES for reimbursement by the Office of the City Manager.
Madam Mayor, and I believe we had a conversation this afternoon regarding the reimbursement by CARES. And I believe there is a report along, attached to the report that I issued on March 1st regarding our reimbursement process. At the time when this memo was issued, we were twenty-five hundred dollars, excuse me, shy of receiving the total project submittal. I'm happy to report that we are, we, all of our projects have been validated and they have been approved for, for payment or payment is in process or received by the bank. That being said, I spoke to Andre McIntouch today with Hagerty. Hagerty is the firm that manages the CARES, the CARES money for Miami-Dade County and all of its municipalities. There is an amount of six thousand nine hundred dollars that is still available under an allocation made to the City of West Miami in the amount of a hundred and nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars for the Public's gift card program. The, the city.
For the next twenty years.
Somebody's.
Mr. Penna, go mute, mute your phone.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay, so the CARES program allocated a hundred and nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents for the Public's Grocery Gift Card Program. We did not issue the five hundred cards at all that we anticipated issuing by the expiration date, which was December 31st. At the time, we reported that we issued a four hundred and seventy-six gift cards to the community, which left us with twenty-three gift cards valued at two hundred dollars each and one gift card valued at a hundred and eighty-four dollars. We have sixty-nine hundred dollars that I don't want to lose. And so we are proposing that the city use the sixty-nine hundred dollars to buy a hundred dollar gift cards for city employees who have been affected by COVID in some fashion. And that is the only way we can get around it. Some city employees have experienced the, the COVID virus in their immediate homes. They have had additional costs for medical bills and copayments. They have expended more money at the grocery stores because the price of, of, of life has gone up, up in general. So I spoke to Andre about the possibility of issuing these cards under those conditions for city employees, but if, but valued at a hundred dollars versus two hundred dollars per card. And so in order to do that, I need approval from the commission so that we can start that paperwork and roll out the affidavits that are, that need to be validated by Hagerty. They have extended the deadline and this is why we're bringing this for, to, for your consideration. It's something that I was not going to bring up tonight. Mayor, you and I had a conversation. We do have some time to think about it. But what I don't want to do is have the county, you know, take those dollars and allocate them, not the county, but Hagerty on behalf of the county and allocate them to other municipalities. So I leave it in your hands. If you have any, any questions, we can come back at, at a later time. Tell you the total number of employees that are involved here. And if we're able to switch out these gift cards valued at two hundred dollars each that the city has absorbed at, at our cost and convert them into one hundred dollar gift cards and purchase the rest. So if you could at least think about the concept, I think it would be a benefit to city employees that have been here doing their job and, and, and obviously have endured the pandemic as any other average American in the, in the country.
Well, as I, and you're right, we did discuss this and, and I, as I stated to you this afternoon, I need a little bit more time to, to, to consider this and I also know that the city could possibly be getting more money from the American Rescue Act, I believe it's called, and I want to see how that plays into this particular scenario that we have. So I, I'm not ready to make a decision on this tonight. I, I, I need to, I need to await further information and.
Sure.
Find out about the money that we, we will possibly be receiving if we can be tied into this as well.
No, it cannot. That, the one, that question I'm prepared to respond to tonight. I spoke to Andre as I explained to you and this money is not tied in any way, shape or form to the future allocation coming from the American Rescue Act.
How long to spend this money?
We have until September of this fiscal year to spend this money.
Okay, so that's plenty of time.
Yes.
I don't want to rush into any, anything. That's, that's from me. I'll, I'll open it up to the table and see if anybody else has any comments or questions. I have a silent table, so we will, we will bring this discussion back at a later date.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item?
Item 12, consent agenda items non-dishe evening. Item 13, good of the order.
I'm going to tie the two together, Madam Clerk. And this is something that I, I, I might have mentioned to you before. And Mr. Attorney, this will be for you as well. On the consent, on the consent agenda items, I would like to going forward have our approval of, of our minutes as a consent agenda item in the hopes of streamlining our meeting because sometimes we have to approve two and three meetings. So is it possible? Is there anything wrong with us including our approval of our prior meetings minutes in, under consent agenda item?
No, ma'am.
Perfect. And I'd like to move that and then in that case to the, to the beginning of the agenda. So we can knock that out of the way. Do I need a resolution or something from you to move the consent agenda item to the, to the top of the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I'd like to hear from the table if you are in agreement or have any questions on my request?
I, I might, might, might have misunderstood what you meant.
I want, I want to move to consent agenda. I, I basically want to change the order of the, of the agenda. I'd like to have consent agenda items either before unfinished business or about before or after unfinished business, before new business. I want to move it to the, to the top of the, of the agenda and be able to include our minutes from previous meetings and, as a consent agenda item. I want to start moving the consent agenda item more than we do.
You cannot, you cannot do that.
Can I do what?
You cannot, the prior meeting minutes have to be approved independently of any other item in the agenda.
So it cannot be a consent agenda item?
That's correct, madam.
Hmm, okay. Alright, well. Um.
I got something.
Okay, hold on, I'm still thinking of something because I've, I've, well, I'll, I'll bring that up later on. Mr. Trainer, I'm going to take that offline with you because I, I have seen prior meetings minutes as consent agenda items, so I will take that offline with you at a later time. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Blannis. Commissioner Blannis, sorry, Commissioner.
At last commission meeting, we had the pleasure of recognizing John Michael and Megan and, and all his staff at the rec for their contribution in, in obtaining the, the award that we got from, from that outfit. And obviously, this outfit scores the, our recreational center, you know, in different dimensions. And, you know, I, I failed, I, I, to mention our commissioner, District 6 Commissioner Rebecca Sosa in the help that she offered us, you know, and her contribution to, for us obtaining the, the building. You know, I always say that, you know, you have to, to give credit where credit is due and, you know, I felt really bad leaving her out, you know, because she was, you know, part of the team. Yeah, you know, we're, we're all a team. We all fought, fought together and, and we accomplished it, but, you know, she had a lot to do with it, so. I would like to recognize that and, you know, thank her for it, you know, because she did have a lot to do with it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
To adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Meeting's adjourned. Everyone have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, thank you.